This meeting is now called order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Witche.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Jason. First item on the agenda are two proclamations.
Okay, the first proclamation, Stand Against Racism Day. Whereas the YWCA is committed to eliminating racism, empowering women, and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. And whereas Stand Against Racism is an annual YWCA campaign to build community among those who work for racial justice and to raise awareness about the negative impacts of institutional and structural racism in our communities. And whereas the City of Renton aligns with the YWCA mission and works to eliminate racial inequity through internal practices, citywide initiatives, and partnerships with other institutions and the community. And whereas the YWCA believes that individuals and whole communities must be engaged in a conversation about racism and speak out collectively with one voice and pledge to stand against racism. And whereas Renton residents value initiatives that will end race-based disparities and make the world a more equitable, inclusive, and dignified place for all to live. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2017, to be Stand Against Racism Day in the City of Renton. And I urge all residents to join me in observing this day and to commit themselves going forward to fight against racism whenever and wherever it may appear. And witness whereof I have hereunto sent my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of April 2017. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Was that Mr. Prince?
Yes.
It's been moved, please, to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Denise Walker from the Y here, please come up and we'd like to present you with a proclamation. And you're welcome to say a few words at the podium there if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Denise Walker. I'm with the YWCA. I act here in the Renton office. And we are with the, I am part of the RAP program, Regional Access Point. We work diligently with homeless people. And we appreciate you all standing with us against racism and empowering women. And we look forward to continuing this partnership. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
You bet. Thank you, Denise, for being here.
Okay, the next proclamation is Arbor Day Earth Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the City of Renton has been recognized as a Tree City USA since 2008 by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees reduce soil erosion, produce life-giving oxygen, increase property values, and hence the economic vitality of business districts, improve wildlife and fish habitats, and contribute many other benefits. And whereas in 1970, Senator Gaylord Nelson introduced legislation, sorry, designating a day in April as a national day to celebrate the earth, and it's called Earth Day. And whereas volunteers from neighborhoods, schools, businesses, and service clubs will help the City of Renton celebrate Arbor Day and Earth Day on Saturday, April 29 by planting trees and shrubs at Cedar River Park to restore and beautify the urban forest. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2017, to be Arbor Day Earth Day in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof I have hereunto sent my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 24th day of April 2017. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
It's been moved, the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Terry, come bearing gifts. Everybody who's got their little bag of goodies there, that's from Terry Flatley.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you very much for the proclamation. At this time, I would like to introduce Joe Scorsio. Joe is the City Manager for the City of Sea-Tac, and he's the past Chairman of the Washington Community Forestry Council. And he's here this evening to present Renton with our ninth Tree City USA Award. Joe.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members. I am Joe Scorsio, and I've worked with Terry on tree issues now for 13 or 14 years together on the Washington Community Forestry Council. We are here representing both the Council and Department of Natural Resources, which are the two agencies which really oversee Tree City USA program in the state of Washington. I've been here before in front of you, and it's always good to come back and highlight a couple of key items. Now, I'm going to go a little off script here, and I want to share this with you. In all the years that I've been involved with the Council, and nearly a decade of which I was able to serve as the Chair of the Washington Community Forestry Council, Renton stood out constantly as the place to look for new ideas, for successful programs. If we didn't, a city on the east side, or one of the small towns, didn't have an idea where to start, we were often sending them to Renton to say, "Look at what Terry's doing here. Check into Renton's program." That kind of gets lost in the shuffle. But I also bring that around to you tonight. And the reason that your program has been successful here is not only the work of Terry and his staff, but it's the support of this council and the preceding councils that have placed a value on improving the tree cover and the tree canopy in Renton. And I'll give you some numbers, because it's really quite amazing. In the, the city's actually been doing something relative to Earth Day or trees since 2005, but officially have been a Tree City since 2008. And during that time, the city has significantly increased the number of trees. Now, just to get a sense of it, publicly owned trees, that is, trees on city property, your inventory indicates that you have more than 136,000 public trees in this city. That's a phenomenal number. Since 2009, you have added almost 3,900 additional public trees to this city, and that is a significant improvement, because what is happening in most cities around the state is losing trees, particularly public trees, unless they are in parks. And you've gone to great efforts to increase the tree canopy along roadways, and that's quite significant. You have an active program that monitors. You use certified arborists to check the health of trees, and that's an important factor. And as was pointed out in the proclamation, you have a celebration coming up on the 29th to plant even more trees in, is it Heritage Park or Cedar? Heritage Park, on Saturday, the 29th at 9:00 in the morning. And that's going to significantly change it. It's not just planting the trees, it's the rest of what goes with that. So I am very honored to be able to present you with your ninth Tree City USA Award, and more importantly, your seventh consecutive growth award, which means you are improving your program each year above its previous levels. And that is a very significant accomplishment. So a round of applause for Renton for doing the right things relative to protecting the environment and our Tree City. So congratulations.
Thank you, Joe.
And as usual, we have the very brand-new and ready-to-be-flown Tree City USA flag. So if we can get a, you want a part of this, please? Wherever you would like to do this.
Want to get the else back here?
Absolutely.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Not trip on all our Arbor Day bags.
My god.
Oh, I can't imagine, and it looks pretty nice.
It seems nice, like a couple years ago.
One, two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Now we're.
Yeah.
I hope you didn't indulge me a few more minutes here. Nobody ever gets to really see what's in these bags sometimes, and so I thought I'd pull this one apart. In the bag is a, some urban forestry propaganda with a pot. We have our, we have our traditional Arbor Day, Earth Day t-shirts. More about these in a minute. Then we've got some planting tools, I'll leave those in there, and some soil, and seed packets, wildflower seed packets. So I hope you get some use out of those, and if you don't, give them to your kids or grandkids, I'm sure they will.
Thank you very much, Terry. My wife always appreciates your gifts.
Renton's urban forestry program is housed in the Community Services Department. Our playbook is the Urban and Community Forestry Development Plan, approved by City Council in 2009. By following the plan, the city has become a Tree City USA since 2008, and has received numerous growth awards as a result. Some of the growth award accomplishments include improved funding for sidewalk maintenance and tree maintenance, conservation partnerships, the Urban Forestry brochure, acquisition of forested parcels, the Benson Hill Neighborhood Tree Inventory, and 23 other projects. During 2017, the Urban and Community Forestry Development Plan will be updated for the next 10-year period. We hope to have a street tree regulation in place, a Renton Champion Tree listing, a Street Tree Selection Guide, and much more in the revision. During 2016, a joint effort by Community and Economic Development Department and Community Services Department was made to provide greater customer service for tree requests from residents, developers, businesses, and others. CED and Community Services collaborated in contracting with Davy Resource Group for consulting arborist, who receives tree requests, performs site inspections, and provides quicker response times to those requesting urban forestry assistance. This has resulted in increased tree maintenance contracting, an increase in closing out work orders, site inspections for tree issues related to code compliance and development regulations, and contracting stop sign and street clearance work from lists provided by public work staff, and much more. The consulting arborist, and I'll name her, her name is Ann Thayer, she inspected over 1,700 trees last year and inventoried over 3,800 new street trees planted by developers since 2010. Ann is on target for doubling those numbers in 2017. We continue to recertify with the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program. Part of that recertification includes the Arbor Day Earth Day proclamation, read this evening, and sponsoring an Arbor Day Earth Day event. This year, our Arbor Day Earth Day event will be held Saturday, April 29 at Heritage Park, 233 Union Avenue Northeast. We will plant 30 trees throughout the park's open spaces and in the small forest on the west side of the park. One of the trees that we're planting is called an Espresso Kentucky Coffee Tree. Kind of a new. In addition, shrubs, flowers, park cleanup, and installing mulch to trees and in playgrounds are other activities that we have planned. Our event begins at 9:00 a.m. with check-in and work assignments, and followed by the mayor's presentation. The 100-plus volunteers will plant until the lunch bell rings, funded by generous donation from Integrity Networks. Volunteers will receive an Arbor Day Earth Day t-shirt, provided by Lindbergh High School's Skills USA class, under the leadership of Mr. Goodwin. And that's where the t-shirts came from. Teresa Nishi worked hard securing these donations. And park's maintenance staff will provide placement of trees and other plants, and supervise small groups of volunteers. We're also going to have two conservation organizations, Forterra, who's been our partner with invasive removal along the Cedar River, and a new group called the Shadow Lake Nature Preserve, and they will have displays. Finally, we wish to express our gratitude to City Council and the mayor for your support of the urban forestry program, and ask for your continued assistance to grow the urban forests in Renton into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry, and thank you for the great work you do on this every year. Are you guaranteeing sunshine on Saturday?
Yes, 100% guaranteed.
Okay.
You can have your money back if it doesn't.
Okay. Thanks, Terry. Okay, moving on to administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're interested in working for the City of Renton, there are many full-time and seasonal and summer jobs. Just go to governmentjobs.com/careers.Renton, and believe me, you will have the most exciting career of your life. In addition to Arbor Day, Earth Day, on April 29, we have the Spring Shred-a-thon. This will be from 9:00 to noon at Sam's Club. Again, you can find out more by going to rentonwa.gov/shredathon. We've just released a new editions of What's Happening, and golden opportunities are recreation guides. There's a lot of different things to do, so please check them out and register for your programs before they all fill up. April is also Safe Digging Month. And if you were wondering what that's about, it's to make sure that when you're digging, you do not hit, you know, underground pipes or lines. So if you're planning any digging, please call Washington's free 811 service that will notify the appropriate utilities of your intention to dig, and will make sure that it's a safe process. We have more classes from the Department of Ecology. Saturday, May 6, from 1:00 to 5:00, Don't Drip and Drive Program that offers free workshops for auto leak detections. Again, this is available for the public. And we were just told by Terry Flatley that spring is here and summer is going to follow soon. We will believe that. It's a great time to enjoy the parks and trails in Renton, but please do so with safety in mind. You can find out more about all the opportunities, about Renton's parks and regulations. We have brochures, we have information on the website, we have an off-leash dog park. So enjoy from Coolon to all our trails, but please look at ways that everyone can enjoy those. And then finally, we have a lot of different traffic changes and preventive street maintenance. You can find out about each one of these, again, going to rentonwa.gov/trafficimpacts. Thank you, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Pre. Okay, next is audience comments. We have several people who signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. First is Ben Johnson.
Ben Johnson, City of Renton, Mayor, Council, everybody. I'm not going to talk about our favorite subjects, which are fluoridation and the John Burke Society, but actually, more seriously, here to talk about dangerous dogs. In our little neck of the woods, we've had sort of a, an issue with a particular dog that's basically kind of scared the crud out of our family. There's basically a dog that, two dogs, a larger one, came into our backyard, started growling at our cat. We had to deal with it in our own particular way. My wife's had this dog lunge at her while going to get the stuff to the car, called the police, and the police actually calmed the mean down, you know, because it was, I viewed it as a threat on my family. Not to get into the nitty-gritty details, I'm sort of, I talk a bit game, but I'm sort of a gentleman. But I actually did have to purchase things to help defend my family, and my wife has done the same. And outside of places like this, you know, especially around the house, we've had to, you know, wear these things against our nature. You know, it's not been fun. Anytime, you know, we've had issues, the police have been right there, the animal enforcement people have been there, trying to do their best, but they just don't have the tools. So I was, you know, we've been told that basically, and I looked it up, and they're doing their job, that an animal literally has to maim somebody or kill another animal before the city can really do anything significant about an animal. And recently, that happened. There was a, this, one of the animals killed, as I understand it, another dog. And this sounds horrible, but it was a good thing, because if this had to happen, it had, you know, another animal had to die, or be maimed, I'm not sure what the status is, because it would have been a human. You know, I have a young child here, I have a younger one, about the same size as a small dog. We have two neighbors, two doors down, that we watch them, because their family works a lot of times, and they're out and running around the yard, you know, and then across the way, there's another gal with a small animal. And that very day, one of these animals, you know, was barking and threatening and pulling towards that small child. And thankfully, the owners of the animal did their best to move the animal away from this child, but it's, you know, four hours later, something horrible happened. So I urge the city to either, you know, take a look at what other municipalities have done, or take a look at whatever can be done, to make sure something like this doesn't happen, something doesn't have to escalate to this part where we can take, you know, you know, and, you know, for example, to a certain extent, you know, we have a 4,500 square foot lot just right at the threshold, so we're allowed to have chickens. And that comes with, you know, some very strict stipulations, you know, we can't have roosters, because they annoy everybody, we can't have a herd of chickens, you know, there's some pretty strict rules. And so, it kind of seems weird that we have rules for chickens, which the worst thing they could do is peck you. And yet, we have, we allow basically very, very dangerous animals that are barely controlled free run in the neighborhood to do anything they want until they finally, finally, finally step over the line. And it doesn't, something's amiss there. You know, the Sergeant McCaskill's been doing his best to try to, you know, it's amazing to watch the response of the city has in trying to fix this, but the tools aren't in place for anybody there to fix it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for his comments, and, you know, I have, I remember some history about this issue. I just found out about this this weekend and was going back and reminding myself that, I mean, we've had, I remember all the way back when a young child was killed by dogs in this city. But, but it is very serious, and anybody that looks at the statistics knows that really the most dangerous animal we deal with in North America is a dog. You know, we talk about cougars and other things, but dogs kill more people than any other animal. And, and I know we, we had taken it seriously when we, when we created the ordinance that we did. I mean, it replaced, you know, what was effectively, I think, a more lenient ordinance. We had come up with it at a time when there was a lot of, a lot of people had ideas about having breed specific laws, and then other people that felt very strongly not to have breed specific laws. So people were very vigilant, not wanting us to pass a law making it illegal to have a pit bull, for instance. And so, we had tried to develop a law that was just very firm, if somebody had a dog that was menacing or dangerous, or was hurting other animals, that it just wasn't welcome in our city. And I, and I had remembered that one injury to another pet, and it would go on probation, and two injuries, and it was out of the city. I think Mr. Johnson's saying, well, it actually had to kill another animal to do that. And frankly, I'm, where I'm going with this is I would like to review this, again, in public safety, to just make sure that it is, in fact, still the right law, and that it's working, and that we're, I can, I commend our animal control officers for trying to, you know, trying to make it work, but if it's not the right tool, I think we should get at that. So with that, I'd like to move that the subject of the dangerous dog ordinance be referred to Public Safety Committee.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the, our dangerous dog ordinance be referred to the Public Safety Committee for review. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Ben, do you recall the date of that attack you were talking about?
Well, we've had several, but the recent attack with the fatality, I think, was just this last week, so.
Okay, and can you tell me the, Friday, it was Friday? And can you tell me the intersection or proximity?
400 blocks of Wells, of North Wells.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
Is it one dog in particular, or is there a number of dogs?
It's, without getting to the details, because there's two of the owners are in the audience right now.
Okay.
The, it's two dogs, owned by, or possibly not owned, but, you know, shepherded by a particular, you know, house right now.
Okay.
Yeah, and they both had about the same temperament. You know, the, it's, analogy I brought up to the officer, if, if I, for some silly reason, drew two knives and ran up to you as much as, quick as possible, and started yelling at you, but just stopped right at the last second, I would be, I'd be arrested for assault, basically. But a dog can actually get away with the exact same behavior in the city, and until the dog actually makes contact, there's nothing you can really do about it. The dog was just, you know, it just gets minimized, you know, the, you know, one of the dogs literally could snap me just like that. My son will recount another thing, where, you know, they were out fetching stuff from the, from the house, and it, you know, I basically had to chase the dog with whatever I had, you know, basically, you know, it was loose, again, I had to chase it with a vacuum cleaner. I mean, it wasn't my brightest day, but, you know, it just had to be done, because it was sort of, you know, chase the dog away, or watch it attack one of my children, or potentially attack one of my children. So the behavior of these animals, some, and I don't think a breed specific is necessarily, I've seen the same type of animal behave very nicely, and I've seen other breeds behave horribly, depending on how they're treated, so I'm not sure necessarily a breed specific, but there's, there's a level of behavior in a small city that, I know I'm running out of time, but a small city demands that, you know, the animals behave very civilized. And, you know, a growl, you know, could, you know, or a lunge can knock over a cedar and chintress. I mean, so the behavior really has to be, you know, I think, strict. So, you know, growling, menacing, I think that's almost enough at that point. You know, we wouldn't tolerate it from other humans, so we really shouldn't tolerate it from other things. I thank you very much for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think your point is really valid about the menacing, and we should see what kind of language we could come up with about that, for the reasons you give. And in fact, one of the comments I'd heard this weekend is that there's people that just feel like they can't go on walks on certain streets because of dogs that live there, and that's, that's just not right at all. I mean, we've, we've got to fix that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Gavin Johnson.
My name is Gavin Johnson, and I live in Renton. And when I was going from my grandma's car to go get her purse, the dog chased me, and I ran, it almost, it lunged at me, and it almost got me, but thankfully, it didn't get me. And after that, I ran into the house, but it was almost felt like the dog could get me, and it could just run freely after that without getting in much trouble. It's like what my dad said about someone, if someone like runs up to you with two knives and stops at the last second, it wouldn't be done, but with dogs, it's not done.
Well, thanks, Gavin. Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Next is Mike O'Donnan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Mike O'Donnan. I reside at 423 Pelley Avenue North. I too am here to express our concerns about the level of fear that a lot of our neighbors have in our neighborhood regarding some of these dogs. I'm not here to condemn every dog, every breed of dog that falls under the umbrella called a pit bull. Many of them, if they're treated properly and raised properly, I understand, are great, great family dogs, and are cherished, and are loved, and behave, and are very good dogs. But the fact is, these dogs have, for hundreds of years, have been bred not to retrieve ducks to the blind, nor pull Timmy from the well, or herd sheep into a, into a pen. They're bred to fight, simply to fight. The traits of these dogs are three, three main traits that puts them into this category. One is being determined, second, being aggressive, and the third being unpredictable. One is being determined, second, being aggressive, and the third being unpredictable. And I know in our neighborhood, the dog that is, came into question that killed the small dog on Friday, I've witnessed many times the owner of the dog walking through the neighborhood, having an extremely difficult time trying to restrain that dog if the dog were to see a cat or another dog somewhere in their yard. And at times, there are even women, ladies that are walking these dogs around the neighborhood. They have no chance of restraining these dogs if these dogs want to go. Tonight, on my way home, prior to this meeting of walking my dog, I ran into another neighbor that informed me that about a month and a half ago, the same dog that, again, killed the dog on Friday, attacked another dog, came running out of the yard, she witnessed it, and attacked a Makita that lives on Pelly and tore the dog's face up pretty severely. I tried to corroborate that with the owner before coming to this meeting, but he was not home to actually speak with him. I'm happy to hear that you are reinvestigating your ordinance on these dogs, because it's true. There are a number of neighbors that said they will not walk within certain blocks of the neighborhood. Something horribly wrong, if that is truly the case. I walk, the minute I walk out of my locked, our locked yard, I take the safety off the trigger on my pepper spray, and I have it in my hand the entire time I walk my dog. I'm very cognizant of my surroundings always, but they can come out of nowhere very quickly. And I'm always very concerned about my little dog's health. And hopefully, and Animal Control, they do a wonderful job, and they know who these dogs are. They've been called a number of times to look into these situations. And something needs to be done, because I know this is a public meeting, and I'm sure the city, and I'm sure the city attorney and the staff does not want to see this happen, hopefully, to a child. And within a year and a half, we're going to have kids walking that neighborhood, going to a school too, and not just gathering on street corners waiting for school buses to pick them up. So I appreciate the fact, Mr. Corman, that you're going to really look into this proposal, I believe that was, came into effect in 2009. And look into this seriously, because this is getting very serious now.
And frankly, Mike, we don't want people feeling that way, adults either, walking down the street, feeling that fear, so. I just have a question for you on the, again, on the attack of the dog that was killed. Did police respond, do you recall?
My wife and I were not home, and I'm very happy that I wasn't, because I heard and witnessed a dog many years ago dying from another dog, being killed by another dog, and that, those sounds haunted me for a long time.
Just in case we weren't there, if it's convenient for you, if you could either email me or give our police officer in the back the address, so we can try to contact the owner of the dog that was injured or killed?
I believe your animal control people, we're speaking with them.
Oh, okay, alright.
Because they spent quite a bit of time there on Friday afternoon.
Okay, alright, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is Shelley Green.
Hi there, my name's Shelley Green, I'm a resident of Renton. And I'm here today speaking to all of you on behalf of a group of community activists called Renton Resist, to extend an in-person invitation to the town hall we're hosting coming up next month. Just want to, I guess, check in and make sure, was there anyone who did not receive the invitation to that?
I recall receiving it, I think it went to the full council, I'm pretty sure.
Great, I know a couple of you have already RSVP'd that you'll be there, and we really appreciate that. So just wanted to check in if there are any questions, and I also have flyers with me if hard copy of the salient details is useful. I can leave those, so are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions, or would anybody like a flyer?
I think we all got the email, but I wouldn't mind having a flyer if you want to leave them with the clerk here.
I will do that.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is Diane Dobson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I've spent a lot of time, I'm from North Renton, and I've spent a lot of time dwelling on the situation about the animals this weekend, and became quite emotional at times, because in my opinion, this was a completely preventable accident. Unlike Mr. Johnson, I'm not quite the gentleman that he purports himself to believe. And I'm frustrated, and I'm fed up, and I'm tired, quite frankly, of the administration's apathetic approach and response to our neighborhood about various concerns. There's members here on the council that are part of the Public Safety Committee last year that went on a safety walk throughout the neighborhood with us in the downtown area, and we spoke on various houses that were neighborhood concerns to us, including this residence in question where the pit bull is. And we did speak to members of council about our concerns about the dog. Is that accurate? With Public Sa, I mean, can I ask the Public Safety Committee, do you remember us talking to you about this dog?
Well, I think probably the best thing is to go ahead and make your presentation and, you know, nobody's going to deny if you said you were out there with them that.
Well, no, I'd like to hear from the council, quite frankly, because you guys are the people that we elect to be our voice, to be the people that speak up for us when we ask for help. We try to address these problems within our neighborhood, we go to the various departments and ask for help, and when we get no response and we get no solution, we come to you as our last resort and ask for help. So we went on a safety walk with your Public Safety Committee, and this house came into question. And I'm asking those members, do you remember us telling you about this dangerous dog?
Once again, if you want to direct questions to individual council members, then you can do that offline. If you want to, you know, make a presentation for the full council to hear, that's what we're here to listen to.
Duly noted, Mr. Mayor, duly noted. I'll bring it to fact. I became aware of these dogs at this residence in August 2015, when multiple neighbors had dealt with dangerous dogs. I myself had been cornered at a shell station by the dog that was uncontrollable by its owner. A man that was at the gas station had to pull the dog away from me. My daughter on Park Avenue had one of these dogs from this residence come into her yard and corner her on her porch. She had to use a yard tool to get the dog away from her. Two other dogs, two other neighbors that same month, in August 2015, made complaint to the Renton Police Department. And on or about August 15th, 2015, excuse me, August 18th, your Renton Animal Control Officer told our neighbors he'd be sending a letter to the residents to advise the owners they had a dangerous dog. Subsequent to that, we made repeated complaints about the aggression of this dog. September 24th, this dog attacked a spaniel on the Cedar River Trail, September 24th, 2016. We made complaints to Animal Control. The dog tore this spaniel apart, the spaniel had to go in for emergency surgery to have it closed. You've heard from neighbors, multiple neighbors have complained about this dog, yet nothing is done. Your Animal Control Officer gave me reason after reason as to why he cannot go after this dog, including the city attorney's office, who won't take cases like this. I come to the conclusion now, I can't ask you if that's true, because apparently you guys don't answer anything on record. I can take it offline, which I can't even begin to express to you the amount of frustration at that, Mr. Mayor, that you won't answer questions.
We're trying to answer questions, I'm not going to have you quizzing every council member with every question that you have. If you want to do that, you can do that on your own, offline, not during the council meeting. But we want to hear what your concerns are, and we want to address them.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I pose those questions to your council members, are they to give me a response if I send an email in and ask about that?
I would think they would, sure.
Do they have your directive to do so?
I don't direct the council, they're independent elected officials.
And those independent elected officials choose to sit silently on that panel and not answer my question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I mean, I can't speak for all the council members, but I do want to say that I, I'm shocked by what I'm hearing, and I can tell that it is a very, very important issue for this neighborhood, and I want to help. I was not part of that tour last year, I was council president, not on public safety. I'm not trying to say I don't co-own the problem, but I will say that I just wasn't aware that there was such a scary dog living down in that neighborhood. But I did just find out, and I want to help, and.
And, excuse me, apology for interrupting, it's not just a scary dog, it's a scary residence. And I say this tongue-in-cheek, knowing they're sitting behind me right now. It's a scary residence, and for 30 years, our neighborhood has been terrorized. Drug deals, stolen property, SWAT team raids, you name it, they've done it. They've had alcohol-related deaths, overdose. We've reached out and begged the city attorney for help with the nuisance property laws. The same nuisance property laws, I received a letter from your administration on March 21st telling me you have new nuisance property laws that are posed to address these nuisance properties. 10 days later, that Arlington house burned down. Is that what you proposed to solve your nuisance property loss? Are we going to have to have a fire to get rid of this property in North Renton? I begged you for help before and said, do we have to have a death before you help us? I didn't differentiate between a human life and an animal life, and I'm sorry, any life was lost at all. Your apathetic approach is disgusting.
Okay, do you have anything else, or are you finished?
Oh, I've got a lot more, Mr. Mayor.
Well, your time is about up, so make it quick.
Oh, I'm done for now, but I'm not done.
Okay. Next is Clint Bridwell.
Hi, I own the dog that they're talking about, and the dog, first of all, she said that it attacked another dog. It's never attacked another dog. The dog's a year and a half old, she's talking about stuff back to 2015. Last Thursday, I was walking my dog on the leash, a poodle, I seen a poodle in the yard ahead of me, so I turned around, I crossed the road, I went the opposite direction, and the poodle chased me down. And my dog grabbed it and shook it, and it did die. And I'm very, very sorry to the owner, and I've tried to express that. And the bottom line is, there's a leash law in Renton, and I can control my dog to the best of my ability, but if other people are not controlling their dogs, it doesn't do any good.
Excuse me, Diane. So, we're not going to adjudicate your case here on the council floor. I'm a little bit hesitant for us to take a lot of your testimony, because I don't know if there's a criminal investigation taking place, or certainly there could be some civil action if your dog killed another dog. I think the appropriate thing for us to do is have the Public Safety Committee review our dangerous dog ordinance and take whatever appropriate action in the future through a new ordinance, if that's necessary. But in terms of the case that you have now, we have to leave that up to the police. If there's, if the police have investigated that and find that they have no grounds to take action, this is something that the council is going to review and possibly change that.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. James, and I can't read the last name. Because you're not on the sign-up sheet, would you spell your last name? Give the city.
E-A-R-L.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor, I've lived in this Renton community for three years. I don't know very many people, I've extended my hand out to practically every citizen I've come into contact with. Some have accepted it, and some have rejected it based on their own proclivities, you know, how they decide they want to conduct their own personal affairs in regards to friendships. Mr. Bridwell, I met him before he moved into the community, maybe a year and a half ago. He lived in Capitol Hill, I met him down there. That dog that he has, got it about a year and three months ago. Sweetie is her name. I've walked her, she's not people-aggressive at all. This dog is totally not people-aggressive, but it's all dogs that I've known that they're toward other animals, they are aggressive. I mean, to one extent or another, I mean, some are, you know, a little bit tougher than others, but all dogs are territorial and all are aggressive. From what I understand, this man was retreating with his dog. I've walked my dog with him, we keep our dogs apart, because they're not going to get along. You know, they're territorial, they want to be on top. We make it a point to keep these dogs away from other dogs, we make it a point. People will bring their dogs within range of these dogs, and we tell them to back them back, because, you know, they're, all dogs are unpredictable. You know, he don't bite, yes, he has teeth, so he'll bite. And in this instance, if this man was retreating with his dog, I think there's enough laws in place to control aggressive dogs, first of all. If a dog attacks or shows a proclivity for violence against people or other animals and acts on those, then I think that appropriate action can be taken. The Renton PD, that's a professional organization. If there's any problem with these dogs, they're going to get on top of it, no question about it. But they're fair, they're tough, but they're fair. And if there isn't anything wrong, they're not going to go out and try to find something, man, to satisfy or settle citizens. There are policemen, not belonging to certain individual groups or individuals in this community, man. We have a saying about Officer Steed, he does it for the ratchets. Well, he does it for the ratchets, meaning that he doesn't distinguish between those substance financially and those who are out there homeless on the streets. You know, so he's to be admired in that regard. So to attack the Renton PD and the Animal Control Officer in this instance here, I don't think it's appropriate. I mean, if this dog had had a history of attacking other animals, that could be proven, because I'm hearing Diane say that one of them was up on the porch, her daughter's porch. I've never known these dogs running loose, not from Wells Street all the way up to Park Avenue there, where her daughter lives. That's, you know, I've never seen it. My dog, he's 120 pounds, this dog, the worst he'll do to you is knock you down and lick your face, but he's a bulldog, he's a pit bulldog. And he's not aggressive to other animals, because I've trained him away from that, I've focused on it. He's 11 months old, and Diane's seen him, you know, she's met him a couple of days ago, when she came to the house for another matter. But this dog is non-threatening, and to just paint all them dogs as menacing and put some type of insurance requirement on having them, how do you determine which one is a pit bull? You know, how much pit bull blood do you have? What is a pit bull? So you get into all them questions, man, until, ridebiters will kill, they are capable of doing it, they're big enough to do it. You know, pit bulls, you know, a pit bull is a dog that gets in a pit and fights. You know, and these are not pit bulls technically, you know, they're not pit bulls, you just have some of that line, that dog line in them. They're from 45 pounders like Sweetie is, to the 120 pounder like Doofus. He's so big and stupid, we call him Doofus. And this other dog that lives at Clint's house, I named him Stupid, because he was a big stupid dog. He was just, you know, a big old doofus. And a young man, he may have been frightened when that dog came at him, because they come fast when they come. But I'm almost certain that that dog was coming to play, you know, it wasn't coming to, because if, one of those dogs, they're fast enough, they're cat-like quickness on, if they wanted to catch up to his kids, man, they would have done it if they intended to do harm. It probably came to play if they had gotten out of the yard, you know. But if they wouldn't leave that neighborhood, I mean, that street to go all the way up on Park, it would be no reason for it. These dogs are on leashes all the time that I see them, I walk both of them, I walk Sweetie and I walk Stupid. You know, because my dog, either one of them gets with that, they're not a killmate, so they're going to fight. So that's just, that's just the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I was just going to say, I think, you know, this illustrates that it's time to discuss the ordinance again. And we probably will want to get some public input. I think those of us that have dogs, and I have two dogs, and we love our dogs, our dogs are like family in many cases. And so, you know, the idea of one of our dogs getting killed by another dog is absolutely appalling. And I am kind of concerned, I mean, I don't think, I mean, we have laws where our dogs are confined and on leashes. I think we can't depend on those protections relative to our dogs. So, you know, you should not, in our city, possess a dog that if it did get off its leash or if it did get out of the house, is going to go kill another animal or kill somebody. Because one thing dogs are good at is escaping, and that happens sometimes, so. So we, you know, I think as a city, and. So, so we, you know, I think, as a city, and, and I know this came up the last time we discussed the ordinance, is, you know, people have to, they have to have dogs that, that are polite enough with other animals and, and people, that they're not gonna harm them. And then, we just need to make sure that we've got protections that, I, I guess we want to, you know, we, we need to, of course, balance the, some people, you know, there, there will be disputes, and some people say, well, your dog started this spat, and my dog, you know, just got involved in it. But we really need to get to the bottom of that and understand, and have rules that are gonna make it so that, again, people can feel safe walking down their street, not feel like they're gonna get, get hurt.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes. Yes, I just wanted to answer the question. I know that we don't do crosstalk during audience comment, but to answer the question in terms of, was I there, or was, it was Ed, Prince, and myself did go on the North Renton Walk-
And on person.
And on person, and we were there for probably two hours, and we saw a number of houses and a number of different issues related to the area. I don't recollect exactly a specific dog being pointed out. I, I will say that I have two small children, and one of them, or actually, they both go to school with Mr. Johnson's kid, and, and so I can relate to the feeling of having your child feel like it's under attack by a dog. I can't even imagine it. So I think this is an issue that we need to revisit and deal with immediately, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have five items for council consideration. Are any items that council member liked pulled for discussion?
I move that the council concur with the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni. Second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Pavoni.
Um, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor. Oh, no, excuse me, I do. I've, the Committee of the Whole has one committee report.
Okay. Committee of the Whole committee report, Family First Community Center. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize up to $4 million for the capital campaign of the Family First Community Center. The committee further recommends that a portion of the $4 million be used to fund a project manager for the capital campaign and for architectural design work for the community center. Staff will request council authorization for the specific items prior to any expenditures. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
So, this is an exciting project that we're looking at, at doing in cooperation with a couple of other groups in the Cascade Benson area, an area that's definitely underserved in our community. And, and it's, it's a really fantastic opportunity for the city to finally make an investment in that area of the community, so. With that, I move that the council concur with the Committee of the Whole committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni. Second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. McErvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Witche?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Oh, I just happen to have a reporter or two.
Okay. Finance Committee, Committee reports. The Finance Committee approves for payment on April 24th, 2017. Claim vouchers, 355575, 355578 through 355591, 355625 through 355950, 5365 through 5375, and three wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,394,085.8, and payroll vouchers including 607 direct deposits and 38 payroll vouchers This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
As usual, I have a couple things that I pulled out, just for the public to know that the city does run an electronic home monitoring program, and we rent our, the equipment from the Washington Association of Chisa Police. It's a very successful program, and it saves us, per prisoner day, about $100, because the people have to pay 15 to be on it. And it'd cost us a lot more money if they were in jail, and our rental bill for one month was $15,059. So we got any good value there. The other thing is that we, in the vouchers, we reviewed 68 pages of one, they're about that line item, I don't know, about 28 items to a page, of credit card that were used that, for, we call them purchase cards, instead of, saves the city money. They're all very well reviewed, but it saves us money, because we don't have to do a paper voucher and send a check out and all that stuff. But that bill was one of the bigger ones we've ever had, $223,143.99 for this month. With that, I move the council approve the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person. Second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay. The next Finance Committee report is regarding the 2015-2018 Fresh Bucks Implementation Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment Number Three to Contract 16-129 with the City of Seattle Office of Sustainability and Environment to accept additional F-I-N-I grant funding for 2017, increasing the amount by $13,276, to fund an incentive program for shoppers using their SNAP benefits. This is signed by the, the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is actually money that we're receiving to use at our-
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market. Farmer's market. And what it does, it allows people with low income to get coupons, and they can get up to $10 every once a week for, but they have to buy fresh vegetables, and it goes along with a nutrition program. It's really a great program, and it's one that we get, get to do, because somebody's given us the money to do it. That makes it even nicer. With that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person. Second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay. The next committee report from Finance is the Facilities Division Reorganization. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to approve the reorganization of the Facilities Division in order to add two new maintenance Technician One positions and allow for an additional 120 man-hours per week, which will increase response time. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is, again, a good thing for the city, because we're getting more hours by reorganizing and not hiring any more employees, so that Community Services is really doing a good job. With that, I can move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person. Second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next report is regarding a salary upgrade for an electronic system supervisor. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the salary upgrade of the signal electronic system supervisor from grade A23 to grade A25. The increase in costs will be absorbed by other line items not fully expended, including salary savings due to existing vacancies. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person. Second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Hey, the final Finance Committee report is regarding revised 2017 carry-forward first-quarter budget amendment ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a revised Finance Committee report reflecting the corrected amendment to the 2017-2018 budget appropriations in the amount of $67,570,325, plus an additional $167,500 for the float replacement at the Cedar River Boathouse, which is $117,500, and general fund transfer contribution to the Cedar River Boathouse float replacement of $50,000. This makes the total amended budget to be $543,446,119 for the biennial. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding the 2017 carry-forward first-quarter budget amendment be presented for second and final reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council approve the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person. Second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That's it.
You're finished. Thank you. Mr. Prince.
We are a hard-working committee.
You are. I have to admit that.
The Planning and Development Committee has one committee report.
Okay. Planning and Development Committee committee report, this is regarding shopping cart regulations. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the following code amendments. Fine waivers. The administrator may waive fines if all of the following conditions are true. One, the required identification sign is affixed, I think that's what it say, is affixed to the cart. The business identified by the identification sign has implemented security measures as defined to prevent removal of shopping carts from the business's property. The business identified by the identification sign has contracted with a cart recovery service provider as defined, and four, no more than three of the business's carts have been discarded during the previous 30 days. Next, define security measures as including, but not limited to, electronically activated self-breaking wheels, poles mounted to shopping carts, which prevent the removal from the interior of the retail establishment, three, dedicated security personnel, and four, other measures deemed appropriate and effective by the administrator. Next, define cart recovery service provider, and next, eliminate the retrieval fee of $25, which is different than the impoundment fine of $100, because the purpose of the regulations is to reduce the presence of the abandoned carts and not create obstacles for those, these business owners to retrieve and utilize their carts. If four or more shopping carts are impounded within a 30-day time period, the administrator may reissue the three initially waived fines. In such case, a new 30-day time period shall begin. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that the ordinance be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince. Second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Corman?
I have no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to legislation, we have one ordinance for second and final reading.
Okay. The ordinance is regarding the 2017-2018 budget amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2017-2018 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5824 in the amount of $67,737,825.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person. Second by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be adopted as read requires a roll call.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McErvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witche?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay. Ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. May 1st, Monday, at 6:00 PM, the Committee of the Whole will be meeting in the Conference Center. We will have one topic. It'll be emergency management, food distribution, exercise briefing.